I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order at this time for Monday, April 21st. And we'll start first with the invocation by our county attorney, Mr. Brett DeSalsmes.
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Bless our older Americans, encourage them to stay engaged, active, and involved in their lives and in our community. May all we do this evening bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here, please join me in a moment of silence.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to remind everyone to, as in attendance, to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Also like to acknowledge the elected officials here with us tonight. With us each Monday, either morning or evening meeting, Sheriff Chris Thomas joins us. So, Sheriff, thanks for being here. Alderman for North Toppsel Beach, Rick Grant. Our Register of Deeds, Amiga Jarman. Mayor of Holly Ridge, Pete Partien. And Town Council is Walter Zabiki. I think we got everybody covered this morning, or this afternoon. So, we appreciate you being here. This time, we need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Motion approved.
So, we have a second, a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We need a motion for the approval of the consent items.
Motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, we will now move to item three, presentations, starting first with some proclamations. And we'll go to Mr. David Smitherman for those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm now going to read the proclamation for Onslow County Senior Games. Whereas mature adults and the entire community look forward to the Onslow County Senior Games, an Olympic-style event designed to create a year-round health promotion and competition for participants that are 50 years of age or better. And whereas Onslow County Senior Games, held the 26th of April through the 17th of May this year, is sanctioned by the North Carolina Senior Games. And whereas the North Carolina Senior Games, the largest senior Olympic program in the nation, will include more than 60,000 total participants competing in more than 50 medal sports. And whereas the North Carolina Senior Games takes a holistic approach to improving individual health by involving the body, mind, and spirit of the athletes and promoting the importance of aging in a healthy manner. And whereas our well wishes are extended to all the competitors, especially the seniors from the Onslow County community, who will strive to achieve their personal goals. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners welcomes to 2025 North Carolina Senior Games, a leader in guiding statewide programming in the area of health, aging, and recreation to Onslow County. The Board of Commissioners encourages all residents of Onslow County to applaud this organization's devotion to health promotion and to support the outstanding athletes participating in this year's Senior Games.
Thank you, County Manager, Mr. Smitherman. I'd certainly like to invite our folks up for our Senior Games. Come on up. And you're senior, which might be a lot of us in your room. I mean, I guess y'all could come up too, right? So, our chairman really hurt my feelings two weeks ago when he made sure it was clear that all of us on that board out there could be a part of the Senior Games. But I told these young folks here that now getting to hang out with them, I do feel better. And we do have some history. Ms. Anna from Swansboro and I both worked with Joe and Kathy Brown from Swansboro, who got gold medals in Onslow County, and I think went on to get gold and silver medals in the male and the female and the couples' cornhole. So, you know, that was pretty cool to be part of that from Swansboro, Onslow County, all the way to North Carolina in the Senior Games. But thank y'all. And would y'all like to say anything?
I'll start, sorry.
Five minutes each, and there's six of people just go off.
Onslow County Senior Games, it allows us to really partner with some great organizations in Onslow County, such as Swansboro Parks and Recreation, the City of Jacksonville, and also Senior Services. So, we're happy to do that. But this would not be a successful event if we did not have these great ambassadors. So, I would like for them to say something.
Well, I know they were going to make me talk. Just say that, because I always talk. But Senior Games is amazing. So, I'm looking out here and seeing how many are out here that could be doing Senior Games with me. Come compete against me, because it is fun, it's for fitness, it's festive, it's got all the wickets. And we really like to see you out there. We try to move our numbers up. So, help us. Come out there and join us. At least come watch. Sarah, come watch, and then you'll be hooked. You come watch.
Well, who would like to receive this proclamation? Well, thank you. And we congratulate and look forward to y'all's success.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
She said she likes to speak, but you should see her playing croquet, because she is competitive. So, now, Mr. Smitherman, the Resilient and Thriving Communities Week proclamation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Whereas resilient and thriving communities are vital to our state's future health, success, and prosperity to ensure a strong foundation for everyone at all ages and stages of life. And whereas the science is clear that resilience is built and that communities and systems play a key role in promoting self-secure, nurturing environments for all. And whereas adverse childhood and life experiences, adverse community environments, and adverse climate events impact overall quality of life and well-being of an entire community. And whereas Healthy North Carolina 2030, a path toward health by the North Carolina Institute of Medicine in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, identifies reduction of adverse childhood experiences by 25% by 2030 as a goal. And whereas it is our collective responsibility to collaborate in a nonpartisan fashion to promote positive experiences, secure relationships, and supportive environments, to buffer stress and adversity, and to support the Coastal Coalition for Substance Awareness and Prevention, Resilience Collaborative, and the Onslow County Task Force and initiatives across the county. And whereas investing in policies, programs, and strategies that address adversity and strengthen community resilience is essential to the health of our community. And whereas Onslow County encourages individuals in all sectors, public and private, early childhood through post-secondary education, faith-based organizations, healthcare systems, justice systems, social service systems, businesses, and elected leaders to collaborate to strengthen our communities. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the County Commissioners of Onslow County do hereby proclaim April 27 through May 3 as Resilient and Thriving Communities Week in our community and commend its observance to all citizens.
Ms. Church, are you here? Come on up. We do live in a resilient and thriving community, as we all know. And there's nothing wrong with all of us pitching in and being a part of helping each other. And that's what we should be. We're a community of one. A lot of good things happening here. We need to make sure that everybody has a fair and honest chance to make things work for the betterment of Onslow County. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, as he shared, you know, we are one community. CSAP, Coastal Coalition for Substance Awareness and Prevention, is available for trainings, workshops. We do healing book clubs. We discuss books, film screenings, and whatnot. So, anything of your resilient and thriving needs, resilience building, or anything of the such, please do not forget about us. We're free. We're grant-funded. So, we just want to be here in the community, making us stronger. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It will move to be under presentations. We'll start first with a presentation of a thank you plaque to the commissioners. Tonight with us is Mr. Frank Roberts. I don't think Mr. Major Capers could be here tonight. But Mr. Roberts is going to present a thank you plaque to the commissioners.
Yes, sir. Chairman and fellow commissioners, it's, I very much appreciate being asked to come here. And I do apologize that Major Capers, at the age of 87, could not be here tonight. But he's been battling a cold that turned into some bronchitis, and it also had a touch of pneumonia. He's on antibiotics. He's doing better. And we hope that his regular county meeting will still happen on Wednesday. We're banking on that. So, he did ask me to apologize. Now, that said, as you said, my name is Frank Robertson. I think I'm on the docket representing Fleet Reserve Association. Tonight, when I present this award to you, I'm not only representing them, but I'm representing eight other veteran organizations that I belong to. And also, I'm a former chairman of our new Henry County Veterans Council. So, with that said, I'm a retired commander from the Coast Guard. I've been associated with Major Capers for a long time. And these days, he affectionately calls me his chief of staff, which is appreciated. So, I'd like to share something with you real quick. Approximately two years ago, there were a lot of us within the nation who were working on this pieces of Medal of Honor, maybe a ship naming, things of that nature. And right here in Jacksonville, the city of Jacksonville, Brian Jackson actually put out this text message to all of us that he knew were doing something. And ultimately, we got together. At least, we formed a team. And we basically, or two teams, we work within the umbrella of the United American Patriots, but also because we found another group who's passionate about making sure that minorities who didn't get their awards that they should have during certain campaigns. Well, lo and behold, we had a common variable in Major James Capers. So, triple nickel slash Black Ops is also someone who's been working hard for them. But I do thank Brian for bringing us all together and that we finally formed up. Just quickly, you may have heard that we had a letter that was sent to the president. Forty-seven congressmen and senators signed on to it. Both of our senators from North Carolina were on there. And also, your local congressman was on there as well. And that went forward. So, now, it kind of got kicked back to us because we did have to get the congressional waiver for going past five years asking for an award. Now, along with that being done, we also came about a month ago, came across a bunch of boxes from a colonel who had worked on all of these different Medal of Honor pieces from 2007 to 2014. And let's just, for the sake of time, say that there were some administrative things that have kept it from being able to move forward. But we took all these communications. We've actually put together a 20-page white paper. This white paper actually dots the i's, crosses the t's for the 1650, which is the award form that the military uses. And we have the actual letters where the different commanding officers and all were saying that Major James Capers should receive the Medal of Honor for his Fullock mission. We have now floated that to the comitvis of the Marine Corps desk. And we're hoping to see that now go to the Secretary of Navy, so it can go to the Secretary of Defense, and can be placed on the president's desk. We will be redoing the Medal of Honor, the way that the Department of Defense expects it to go. But also, we have our backup with all of our congressional officials and our senators who signed on to that letter. So, while we're doing all this, good old Onslow County came forward and wanted to give a resolution in support of Major Capers being able to get his Medal of Honor. So, what you started was, we got
Major Capers as he's dealing with his illness. And we appreciate what he's done. That, we will go now to the New River YMCA Holdings presentation. We have Mr. Steve Wangren, Mr.
two other counties who've signed on. We got three cities who signed on. And we've got
Billy Sewell, Mr. Charlie Myers, CEO of the YMCA. And they'll present to us, I believe
eight different veteran organizations who signed on and did the same thing. They did a resolution. So, all because of what you did. So, in behalf of our United American
this is going to be the design of the pool.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney. Thank y'all for the opportunity.
Patriots and our Black Ops, we would like to present you tonight with an award. And maybe you can hang up and remember our appreciation for what you're doing for Major James Capers
As we had our groundbreaking last Thursday, or I guess two weeks, almost two weeks ago
as well, your hometown hero.
now, we are in the process of starting our site work. And I think you can see the screen in front of you. And this is an overview of how it'll look when it's all done. And the pool would be at the top on the right, 32,000 square feet, two-pool facility. And then we're adding an addition of 5,000 square feet of wellness in the front. And when we're done next September of '26, we will have 51,000 to 52,000 square feet of full-service YMCA. And the bottom screen, you can see the church facility turned to the Y where we're at now. And then certainly, Charlie and Steve will take it from here.
There's the... So, commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. One of the obligations we came to you with when we asked for your support in this project was to report back to you and give you an overview of where we are on the project from a financial standpoint. And one of the things that I'm here to tell you is, we are definitely going to be good stewards of the money that have been granted to us by Onslow County, the city of Jacksonville, the school board, and the state. Our philosophy, and will continue to be our philosophy, is a no-debt philosophy on this total facility. The aquatic center's one component, but then we have the church, the old New River Life Church facility that we're upgrading and going to add space to. So, we can deliver to this community a facility with no debt that can serve the full community and the families in a safe environment. One of the things we've done is we've partnered with the YMCA Service. That's called YMCA Enterprise Shared Services. That allows us, and that is supported by YUSA, that allows us to provide a high level of financial, human resource, and risk management services that we would potentially have to go out and hire individuals to do, and which really wouldn't have been affordable for us. But that's a service the Y does allow us to have. And we're utilizing that to be good stewards of the money. From a strategic priority standpoint, we started this process, Billy and I started this process, I don't know, 2011. And then went, and that wasn't good timing. And then in 2018, we started a founders campaign, and we raised $1.2 million in this community to start a Y here. We started down at Cheney Avenue, and we've been very successful with that, serving 1,000 or so in before and after-school programs, summer camps. It's all been geared towards youth. And that's one of our big premises is to serve the youth of this community. We are launching essentially, you'll see in front of you, it's a $20 million capital campaign. Well, that $20 million is $14.5 million that have been granted by the four entities here locally in the state of North Carolina. But we've also received a $2.5 million grant from Housing and Urban Development, compliments of our senators, that'll help us expand that facility. We are launching, or have launched, a private capital campaign, $4 million, which we're about 50% there already. And we just launched that. We had got those gifts to launch into the campaign with already some pretty serious commitments. We'll also have an annual campaign for those that can support our, the Y, and what we do in a smaller way. That's not so much the capital campaign. That'll be a campaign that continues year over year. And that's launching this year. And eventually, we will look to create some sort of endowment that will fund, will continue to fund the Y in perpetuity. But one of the main thing for us tonight to present to you is really our construction budget, and where we are and what we've done with the money. So, $14.5 million is the aquatic facility. That's what we were blessed to be given grants for. And what we've done with that $14.5 million is where we're at with it. We have taken down or purchased the land, the five acres that goes with it, based on an appraised value of $1 million. So, it was actually $1,200,000 is the number that happened with that. We have completed architectural drawings and have building permits to start. As Billy mentioned, we have the, we had the groundbreaking last week and a half ago. And that has started. And the approximate number on that was 800,000. And we have signed a contract with Atlantic Construction for $12.7 million to build the facility. In that $12.7, there is a little bit of contingency. So, it gives us a little comfort that we can deliver the project at $14.5 million as planned, without having to go and look for additional monies to finish it. In addition to that, we do have our own private capital monies that we have in the bank now, if that were to happen. But if you know Billy, he drives a hard bargain. And we will stay on that $14.5 million hard. So, again, that $14.5 million makes up the state's 5 and 1/2, the county's 3, the city's 3, and the school board's 3. And we're looking to deliver that project to you, to this community by the September of 2026. And we're very excited to do that.
I'm going to pass it over to Charlie Myers.
Yeah, so I get the pretty part. I got to show you some of the photos that everyone's been waiting for. So, Billy already explained a little bit of the photo you're seeing in front of you now. The top right, as he said, is the aquatic center with the other portion there is where the River Life Church is. For those that don't know, the sanctuary will be turned into a middle-school-sized gymnasium with a walking track around the perimeter of the floor of that gym also. There's just another image of it. You can even see the Amazon building back in the back. So, there's the floor plan itself. You'll see the two bodies of water. On the bottom, you see number one. That's referred to as what we refer to as a family pool. That will be a pool that'll be geared towards just families coming in and having fun in the water, but also to teach a lot of swim, entry-level swim lessons. If anyone's a swimmer, I'm sure someone, a couple of you, lap pools are not usually where you want to put the two, three-year-olds, because the water's 5, 6, 7, 8 degrees cooler. So, throw them in the little warmer water and get them started. Also have just a, the very top portion of that pool will be only about 6 inches deep. So, it'll be an area just for kids to get used to the water with a few little splash features in there. And the bottom pool for those lap swimmers are the eight lanes that you'll have, be able to use to swim. Locker rooms are within that component also, along with the four different multipurpose rooms. They'll be used for swim meets, along with other group exercise programs and stuff that we may have. Top portion is the gymnasium, along with continuing to operate our preschool. Within that, in the bottom of that top portion picture, is our youth development wellness wing. So, you'll see some photos of this later. So, that's the picture of the aquatic. So, you'll see right into the pool right there. The main entrance lobby will be right there, where the, basically, to the bottom of the American flag. There, you're looking into the lobby. Of course, these are rendering, so some of the colors and stuff could still change. But this gives you an idea of the space that it's going to have. Of course, it's not just going to be empty. We'll have chairs and tables and stuff out in there. The little room that you see there is one of those little classrooms that we will be able to use for multipurpose. Top left, the image you see in there is a teaching kitchen slash concession stand. So, we'll be able to do some teaching classes in there, but also doing the swim meets, any big times, have concessions going on there. There's your family pool, along with, on the first image. And the back image would be your lap lane pool. And here, we're getting into the wellness side, but I thought you'd be interested to see just what that 5,000 square feet will do in the front of that building. Of course, the equipment's not going to be white. It would be crazy to put white equipment in a gym, but that's what the architect had there for us. For the ones that have been into the River Life Building on the far-left side, that door that you see there, that's into our administrative offices right now, to have an image of how that building's going to be structured. And there's the current, what will be the gymnasium, with the new flooring put in, the ceiling removed, and some windows added into the top to allow some natural light. Right now, it's only showing two basketball hoops on there, but the goal is to add four more hoops on the sides also within the image. Any questions for any of us?
Questions?
Go ahead.
Wasn't there talk of a therapy pool of some kind? And was it in there? And I don't remember that I saw it.
So, the warm water family pool will be able to use. It'll be able to heat it up if we have to use it for therapy.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
It has like, as Charlie mentioned, a small body. And then there's two or three steps down. And then that, it's like 3 to 4 feet. So, there's therapy, and you can do some, learn to swim in that area before you get in larger pools.
Any other questions?
Well, mine's just more of a thank you. Appreciate what you guys have done and what the Y has done, what the Y did through COVID, helping throughout the community. So, just value what you guys are doing. I know there's been a lot of sweat, blood, and tears to make this happen. So, thank you for the sacrifices that y'all have made and the hours that y'all have put in to make this happen.
All right. Thank y'all very much. At this time, I think we need a motion to accept the...
Yes, we need a motion to approve the cost estimate that was presented, as well as the conceptual plan.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know you did a motion in a second. Did you vote all in favor?
We did. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. There we go. Thank you.
I was excited.
We knew what you meant, too.
That's right. We knew we were going. So, we'll move to our financial audit presentation. And it's going to be Leigh Anne.
I just wanted to hear you say my last name.
Bagla Sala.
Okay, it's good enough. My name is Leigh Anne Bagla Sala. I'm an audit director at Maudes and Jenkins. And tonight, I'm going to be presenting to you your fiscal year 2024 audit results. This slide right here depicts what our agenda is. We're going to go through your engagement team and your different audit opinions you have. And there's a couple slides that we have to go through and require communication. And we'll talk a little bit technical, but not too much, of some things that are coming up in the future. But at any time during the presentation, please stop me if you have any questions. So, this slide right here, I thought, was a good indicator of who Maudes and Jenkins are. This is our first year serving as your external audit firm. We do audit the city of Jacksonville and the Onslow Water and Sewer Authority. So, it was a good opportunity to come help and work on the county's audit. Maudes and Jenkins has been in business for over 100 years. We do have an office in Raleigh, North Carolina. And a third of our practice is government. So, we are not going anywhere. Although a lot of audit firms are getting out of the market of doing government audits, we are sticking in there. And we have a lot of government experience.
That's right, we knew, we knew. So we'll move to our financial audit presentation, and it's going to be Lee Ann.
I just wanted to hear you say my last name.
Bagla Sala.
Okay, it's good enough. My name is Lee Ann Bagla Sala, I'm Audit Director at Maudes and Jenkins, and tonight I'm going to be presenting to you your fiscal year 2024 audit results. This slide right here depicts what our agenda is, we're going to go through your engagement team and your different audit opinions you have, and there's a couple slides that we have to go through and require communication, and we'll talk a little bit technical, but not too much, of some things that are coming up in the future. But at any time during the presentation, please stop me if you have any questions. So this slide right here, I thought, was a good indicator of who Maudes and Jenkins are. This is our first year serving as your external audit firm. We do audit the city of Jacksonville and the Onslow Water and Sewer Authority, so it was a good opportunity to come help and work on the county's audit. Maudes and Jenkins has been in business for over 100 years, we do have an office in Raleigh, North Carolina, and a third of our practice is government, so we are not going anywhere. Although a lot of audit firms are getting out of the market of doing government audits, we are sticking in there, and we have a lot of government experience. So I served as your engagement director, I'm the one that ultimately signed your audit opinions. All audits also have what's called a second partner, or quality control review partner, and that was Tim Lyons. He is the partner in charge of our South Carolina and North Carolina offices. And then you had multiple senior associates, managers, and other staff that served on the audit. The audit does take a very long time to complete, and it's a lot of hours that are put in by our team, as well as the county. Your first audit opinion that you received for the fiscal year is at the front of your financial statements. This opinion basically says what our responsibility is, and also what your responsibility is. Our responsibility is to consider auditing standards generally accepted by the United States of America. We consider the internal control structure of the county for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the county's basic financial statements, but not for the purpose of providing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. We performed our audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as government auditing standards, and our objective is to provide reasonable, but not absolute assurance that the basic financial statements are free of material misstatements. Within your financial statements, you do see Onslow County Hospital Authority and Onslow County ABC Board that make up your financial statements, and we do note that we don't actually audit those, they're called component units, they're audited by other auditors, so we do refer to their audit opinion within ours. But ultimately, the financial statements are the responsibility of county management. For your opinion on your basic financial statements, you receive an unmodified or clean audit opinion, thus the highest level assurance that we can provide. There are also 3 audit opinions located in the back of your financial statements. The first one is what's called a yellow book report, that's a financial statement, opinion basically saying that we tested the county's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. The report is not intended to provide an opinion on the internal controls, nor is it intended to provide a legal determination on the county's compliance with applicable laws and regulations. However, we did perform our procedures in accordance with government auditing standards. You did receive an unmodified or a clean audit opinion, but we did note 3 material weaknesses, and we will discuss those in a couple slides. Also during the audit, we perform what's called a single audit, where we go in and we test the county's grant funding. So in fiscal year 2024, we audited 8 major programs, 4 of those were federal programs, and 4 of those were state programs, and from that, we did audit, issue several opinions. The first one is an opinion in accordance with Uniform Grant Guidance, that's over your federal programs, and that report contained an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. We also issued a report in accordance with the State of North Carolina Single Audit Implementation Act, and you also received an unmodified or a clean audit opinion for that. And then lastly, we did issue a report on the county's compliance with the passionate facility charge program, and you received an unmodified or a clean audit opinion for those as well. And I would just say, we audit a lot of counties, and a lot of counties generally have single audit findings related to their grants, and the county had none, and that was awesome. That was, that was a really, really good to see, especially when you're auditing 8 different programs. The first audit finding that we had, and just wanted to give you a brief overview of what makes up the significance of a finding. So if you have a material weakness, that means that there were entries that were recorded as part of the audit that we consider to be some material to the county's financial statements, and all 3 of these findings that we are going over are considered material weaknesses. The first one is that we had to restate prior year balances, so your fiscal year 2023 balances were essentially restated in your fiscal year 2024 financial statements. The first one related to recording an error for opioid settlement revenue, and I would like to say that this is a restatement that all the counties that I have had to restate for. This was additional information that was received from GASB of how they wanted to make sure we were recording opioid settlement funds, and so we had to restate what was previously done. It wasn't that what was done in the prior year was wrong, it's just additional guidance came out, and essentially, GASB made us go ahead and book opioid settlement funds at your fund level and at your government activities level, so you actually recorded all of the opioid settlement money that you expect to receive over, what, 15 more years? Even though there is a chance that you may not receive all of that. So the first 2 bullets here is, there was a restatement to the opioid settlement fund of $2 million, and then at your government activities, in total, you had a $17 million restatement. Again, that's just recording the opioid settlement money at the government-wide level that you expect to receive over 15 more years. And that will be assessed every year, we'll go in and, and management will assess whether do they think that that estimate of the revenue that they're going to receive is still good or not. The 3rd bullet here is that we did restate grant revenue in the grant project fund for revenue that should have been recognized in the prior year of 1.3 million dollars. A couple other restatements that were noted, the county has always amortized their bond premium using the straight line method instead of the effective interest method, so in the current year, we went ahead and corrected that, and that resulted in a $9.2 million adjusting entry at the government-wide level. There was also an error in the recording of the landfill closure and post-closure costs in the solid waste fund, and that resulted in a restatement of 4.5 or 4.6 million dollars. The 3rd bullet here is that we did restate accounts payable in the prior year for fiscal year 2023 was incorrect, and the airport fund, and we restated the balance for 236,000. And the last one here is that we recorded an error correction in municipal tax collection fund that we stayed in net position 174,000. This, these findings did cause the audit delay, so you will note that the audit did not, was not issued timely, and a lot of that had to do with kind of working through some of these restatements. The next finding that we had is related to financial close and maintenance of general ledger accounts. The trial balance that we received, or the general ledger that we received to complete our audit, did have to have material adjustments to it, and those are listed in this slide. The first one is that we posted an adjusting journal entry of 194,000 to the general fund to reclass EMS revenue. We also recorded an adjustment of 1.2 million to the grant project fund, and almost 17.7 million to the solid waste fund to correctly record grant revenue in accordance with GASB's Statement 33. And then there was also a few adjusting journal entries to solid waste fund, the airport fund, and the government-wide statements, because the OPEP actuarial report that we received in February was incorrect and had to be redone. And then the last finding that we have is for a material weakness for preparation of the schedule of expenditures and federal awards. This is what we use to determine what grants need to be audited in the current year, and the finding that we're representing here is that the schedule of federal awards that we received was incorrect by 5.6 million dollars, so it had to be adjusted and changed. So all of these findings that you do see here, management has had to create what's called an action plan, a corrective action plan, and that's included in your financial statements, what, how management is going to fix those going forward. In addition to that, the county commissioners are going to have to respond to a couple things, they're called financial performance indicators of concern. The local government commission created this concept a couple years ago, and if you have any things that are flagged as financial performance indicators of concern, then the commissioners have to respond in a letter within 60 days of my audit presentation, and I believe that's already been prepared for you all to review. The 3 things that you have to respond to is, the first one is that your audit was late, it was technically due. You had an extension this year to December 1st because of a state confirmation that was late, and we did not issue until April of 2025, so you'll have to respond and say how you're going to correct that in, in the coming year. You did also have a budget violation disclosed in your financial statements, and you'll have to respond of how you'll correct that in the current year. And then the last one is that you did have material weaknesses in your financial opinion, and you'll have to respond to those and how those will be corrected. The next couple slides just give you a couple required communications, instead of a formal letter, we do this as part of our audit presentation. The first one is that your financial statements include a lot of accounting policies, which management is responsible for determining. A lot of those are included in Note 1 of your basic financial statements. The policies that the county are, is using are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and we're not aware of any issues where the county is involved in controversial or emerging issues. Also, within the financial statements, there are a lot of management estimates and judgments used about using management's knowledge and their experience with past, past and present events. Some of those estimates are actuarially determined, and we do review all estimates as part of our audit procedures, and we had no issues with those management estimates. From a relationship standpoint, we received full cooperation from management. The audit did extend over several months, and, you know, throughout the entire experience, the finance team was on top of everything, and they gave us everything that we needed. As part of issuing the audit opinion, we do require management to sign a management representation letter that basically says the information provided to us is accurate, complete, and is everything that we were asking for, and that was signed with no problem. We actually would not issue if you did not sign it. Also in here, we do note that we are not aware that management has consulting with any other accountants. We ask that if anytime, anything comes up through the year that's accounting-related, that the finance team turns to us and asks us, you know, so that we can help guide them throughout the year. And then the last bullet here basically says that there was no significant issues discussed with management during the audit. From an audit adjustment perspective, we did go through all the material weaknesses that the county did have during the audit. All of those adjusting journal entries were made to your records, so your financial statements that you have includes those adjusting journal entries. There were 2 unrecorded or past audit adjustments, these are entries that we determined not to be material to the county, and both of those related to additional prior period adjustments, but we determined them not to be material, so we did not make them. The 2nd bullet here basically tells you that there are a lot of disclosures in your financial statements, and overall, we review them as part of our audit procedures to ensure that they were neutral, consistent, and provided clarity. The 3rd bullet here basically says that our responsibility for other information in your basic financial statements doesn't extend beyond the report, so if you ever provide a report to anyone, provide the entire financial statements, and don't take anything away from the financial statements, is basically what it says. And the last bullet here is that we are independent to the county and its respective financial reporting process. That is all our disclosures. This next slide does give you an idea of some of the advisory services that we do offer with our firm, some of these that we can do and maintain our independence, and some that we can't. So if anytime during the year anyone's interested in learning about different things that we can do, we would welcome that conversation, but again, some of this we can do and some of it we cannot do for you. There are 3 pronouncements that are coming up, and I will not read these to you all, but just have this idea or this concept that your finance department is never changing what they have to deal with, and so the new GASB that's coming up for the fiscal year 2025 is related to compensated abstinence, that will change how the liability is recorded on your financial statements, and we will work with management. We have already scheduled our, our next meeting for fiscal year 2025, it is next week, next Friday, so we will talk through the county with this and make sure this is properly implemented for 2025, and there are a couple other disclosures that are coming, and as those come up, we'll make sure that the county finance understands how those need to be implemented. In the last slide that we have here, as part of additional service, we do offer the county and any CPAs with the county the ability to attend free quarterly continuing education classes. We offer about 32 hours a year, this is just an additional benefit to the county, these are free CPEs for anybody that needs them to maintain their license. That's it. Does anyone have any questions? I know I talked really fast, they gave me 10 minutes.
Questions? All right, hearing done, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than 5 minutes, and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. So we'll now move to Item 4 in Public Comment. Mr. Smithman, do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Zachary Pinkney Jr.
Hello, commissioners and staff, I want to thank you for your time. I am a, I'm a resident of Jacksonville, North Carolina. I was, I've been here since 1974, and I, and I left and came back, and now I've got some things that I want to speak to you guys about, you know, and I hope that we can, we can, we can reconcile these differences, because when I got back here, I noticed that we, we went a long way, we, we've got sidewalks in places now, we've got crosswalks, and the town is building, there was a skate park here when I moved back, I said, whoa gracious, there's things going on. So, you know, the one thing that I, that I wish that we could, we could actually get a little better, though, is, is, and keep going, because you guys are doing so well at helping the access for the public people. And so, you know, the residents in Jacksonville, North Carolina, we, we just want safe access. You know, we want to be able to walk to the mall and, and have a crosswalk that I can go to, you know, a sidewalk that I can walk down. You know, I'm 50 years old now, and I've got children here, they, they would like to go to the mall and get on a scooter, and ride the scooter, but it's too dangerous. I say, hey, you can't go to the, I can only take you to the mall because you can't walk there now. So I'm just, I'm just not here to really complain a lot, because I know we have to have a plan for more sidewalks, because you guys already, we've already got some of them here. But just the other day, I rode by a gentleman, and he was, he was in his chair, and he didn't have a crosswalk, so he didn't have a button to push or anything. And this is, this is right on Western Boulevard, you know, if you go to the hospital, you, you know, you would think that there would be a crosswalk for people to at least walk to the hospital, but you get to the hospital, there's no crosswalk for you to actually even walk over there. So I'm just, I'm just here to push for all my disabled peoples, my neighbors, I got a neighbor that lives by my mom, and he, he just got his legs taken. You know, thank God he has a sidewalk on his side of the neighborhood, because, you know, my 73-year-old mother, she's been living there since 1979, we've been here since 74. And so we've been in Brenmore, and, and yeah, I'm so thankful for that sidewalk, but, you know, and Roy, he can get out in his wheelchair now, and he can get down on his sidewalk, but my mom, you know, she's afraid to go to the sidewalk, because she's 73, and she's got to cross the street to get on the sidewalk, to actually walk up to the sidewalk. So mom says, you know what, son, I'm not going to get my exercise today, I'm just not going to go fight that traffic. Those cars going 25, 30 miles an hour is just enough, I'll just wave at Roy from the porch. And so Roy, he's able to do it, my mom, she's not able to do it, so I'm just like, hey, you know, if we can get more safe access for our elderly, you know, for our disabled, for our regular people, for our children, we got a nice aquatic center that's getting ready to get built, they should be able to ride their bikes to it. You know, we got less than a 5-mile distance for people to go through, they should be able to ride their bikes. I've rode, I've ridden my bike personally, all the way there and more than that, I used to practice Tour de France, you know, these are things I used to do. I used to dream about sidewalks around here, and a skate ramp, and then I left, and all of a sudden, you guys have put this stuff into the system, and so I know we are moving in the right direction. I just want to keep cheerleading and pushing forward so we can actually get more safe access, so I don't have to record a gentleman crossing the road without a crosswalk or any safe way to get over there, you know, so that's what I'm here for. I don't want to rant and rave too much, but I do want to say that we need safe access for the people. I know we've got the funds to do it, I wish we could allocate more funds and do it faster, and so that's what I'm pushing for, and I hope you guys got a plan for safe access for all the people in Jacksonville, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you. Mr. Smithman?
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Tim Bogey.
Afternoon, commissioners, chairman. Y'all know who I am, and I'm here to represent. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look over the PowerPoint presentation I sent this past week. I'd have sent it sooner, but I was getting ready for the race up in Rocket Dam, my boy. So I know we don't do roads as commissioners, however, safety is a responsibility of everybody, and I know it's something that can be affected from this actual board. Mr. Paget, I really like how you said that there's a help in the community, and we're a community of one. So if everybody's helping, y'all come on out next month down to Maynard Boulevard and help me bust up some concrete and asphalt and get to work on that road, it'll be all about it. Come roll your sleeves up, grab a shovel. Okay, a couple concerns down there in Maynard Manor, it's right off... It's right off of Gun Branch Road. School bus does not go past the first access road in that community, so children must walk to and from the bus stop through different types of environments, whether it be the weather, uneven services, or the dark or light, depending on daylight savings. Other parents must schedule their workaround, also picking up and dropping off those children. A big area of concern is there is one registered sex offender that lives in Maynard Boulevard or Maynard Manor, and there are four more that are within one mile of that bus stop. So that's kind of a concern for most parents that are down there, now that they're aware. Emergency services response time, I'm not really sure how that's going to work very well because my son and I witnessed an ambulance scrape the bottom of the vehicle in an unavoidable pothole on that... Well, it looks more like a pond, but on that actual road. This would be really detrimental to anyone who's in the back of that ambulance if they're getting any type of medical needs, syringes, or whatever they need. So that's another safety concern that we will have down on that road, plus getting to that person would be also difficult. Firefighting services, continuing on with EMS, obviously, they will struggle to get to everyone's homes. There are narrow passageways that will slow down and back up the essential services. Also, there's obstructed fire hydrants, which are supposed to be maintained and unobstructed according to the NFPA 507.54. As well, it also says that the fire hydrants are supposed to be inspected annually in that area. I've sent a message to the county fire chief, but I've yet to hear back if that's happening. And also, the hydrants do not meet the minimum distance from houses or from the other hydrants per the NFPA. Police impacted ability to respond to emergencies and maintaining good order, that should go without saying. Postal service, postal service is getting ready... Well, they're saying that they're going to be stopping services down there unless something is done about some of the different road areas as well. We need to remember that the United States Postal Service delivers things like medicine to those who cannot get out and get their own medicine from the pharmacy or from their doctor. Also, there's basic necessities that are delivered down there, such things as groceries, home goods, clothing, things of that, for our elderly and for the other physically constrained people to come in and out. The water quality, that's been resolved. That was resolved in 2015, even though it originally happened in 2004. I got that email today from the state. I'm not even going to go through the accountability because it's... All that that happened was decades ago now. None of us here was part of that, so obviously, there was a lot of failures as well. I've also sent a complaint to the North Carolina Real Estate Board, letting them know about what is going on down there as far as the realtors' failure to let the residents know about the road, that it is a private road and not a public road. Solutions, obviously, we've already got county policies, like the county subdivision ordinance that we use now, which is great because that keeps everybody honest and holds everybody accountable. One thing I would like is an EMS assessment of that area to drive through, to look, and start looking at response times. I'd like the fire department or fire services to conduct a hydrant inspection. And also, I would like to have help from this board in passing House Bill 159, Orphan Roads Maintenance Program Grant, House Bill 983, which used to be House Bill 733, Orphan Roads Study Committee, and Senate Bill 635, Orphan Roads. That's all I have. But one quick note, and I'm about out of time. My son didn't vote this last time because he doesn't see anything that the government does. His property taxes go up. He pays a lot of money for that. He's a single person. He works two jobs. He doesn't see anything working for him with the House. He pays property taxes onto the county, but the road is still considered private, even though there's no HOA or anything like that that was built.
Hey, Mr. Bogey.
It hurts my feelings that he don't vote, but I understand where he's coming from.
Mr. Smithman?
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Taylor Green.
Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Smithman, Mr. Sims. Back for the same thing. The neighbor has found every loophole that they can find, lied their way into. They now have a tree farm that they shoot on that's 518 feet from my grandkids. Yesterday, Easter Sunday, they started shooting at 11 o'clock. There were six, seven, eight people out there shooting. We had to leave. It became so loud, we actually had to leave the house. We couldn't take it. They had to leave. It's just, it's absolutely ridiculous. This 500 feet is way too close. It needs to be at least as much as the 1,000 feet. You know, the counties now can't enforce this because they're growing trees, and I'm air quoting, they're growing trees on the property now, so they have a farm. So we have to endure, and the gentleman came over to the house that owns the land and said, we could condition ourselves to put up with the noise because that's what he's done, because he led the FBI Training Center for 20 years before he retired. So he's had a business out there for years, training people to shoot. You hear the alarm, you hear the draw, the double tap, they're timing themselves, trying to shoot. It's a training facility. It is a gun range. It is ridiculous that this is still going on and that nobody can do anything. Thank goodness for Sheriff Thomas. He's got a tract, he's trying to do something, but you need to change that ordinance. It needs to be at least 1,000 feet. They don't have a safety zone. Eventually, the odds are something's going to happen, an errant bullet's going to get out somewhere because they don't have any safety zones. They've not had a live-fire range, but now they've got a live-fire range. They've got signs all over it. It's a live-fire range. If you don't make changes to it or becoming more urban... I'm a 2A guy. I like 2A. They need to be 1,000 feet away from houses. 1,000 feet, I'd be okay. I'd deal with what I got to deal with. But 518 feet, it sounds like they're right on top of you. Alexis can hear people actually talking on the range, can hear their conversation. It's just way too close. So we would appreciate it if you would consider making a change to the ordinance, and not just for us, there are other people that are being bothered by this as well, because they're not just shooting. They have a private gun club, and there's probably 80 or 90, 100 Marines out there because they shoot seven days a week if it's sunny. And in fact, a couple weeks ago, they were shooting in the rain, which however, whatever, they were shooting in the rain. So we would appreciate it if you would try to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smithman?
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Victoria Fretwell.
So I'm up here also regarding to the shooting, and I don't know if you guys know, from March 27th to April 21st, they have been shooting every single day, and now it's affecting myself, my children, and my grandchildren. My oldest daughter lives 518 feet away from the shooting that takes place. Her daughter is autistic. I'm not really sure if anybody in this building has a child that is autistic, that is on the spectrum. Well, my four-year-old daughter, granddaughter, is on the spectrum. And then unfortunately, the children who have these kind of issues have more sensitivity to loud noises, and it puts them into a different state of confusion. Now that my granddaughter is now going through the noise and the shooting every single day, we actually called 911 because she was having... She was in a different state of confusion. It's not fair to her to have to live this kind of lifestyle, so it takes us to stand up for these children that need protection, and that's not doing... Nothing is being done. They still get to shoot every single morning. They're shooting all the way until night. I own a preschool. Half of my preschoolers are autistic. They are on the spectrum. And if you don't know anything about kids on the spectrum, I advise you to actually look it up, research it, and educate yourself on it because these children need us to protect them. They're going to need to be protected for the longest time of their lives because they don't have the ability to live by themselves. So I'm here to protect them and asking you guys to make a change. And I live very close to my daughter, and when they are shooting, there is zero peace. They start shooting at the earliest at 7:45, and this puts me into an anxiety overload. And then following that, I have to leave my home, which is supposed to be my safe place, but it's not my safe place because I don't feel safe at all. And I ask you guys to make a change to protect us again, and it's not working. I keep asking, nothing's done. The owner of this shooting range had the nerve to come to my house and voice his opinion. His opinion does not matter to me. I explained to him, I'm not going to put up with it, and it was not fair for the children who attend my preschool. And after I spoke to him regarding how my preschool worked, he recommended me giving my preschoolers screen time. Give them all an iPad. Give them screen time. That's the best and worst idea ever. We don't do that. We are completely outside for four hours, and we have to take the children that are on the spectrum inside to help them have to deal with the noise. It's not... It is completely not fair. It is... Which is again... That is totally against our rules. We are outside the whole time while we are opening, and I'm asking for something to be done and to stand up for the children and autistic kids that attend my preschool. And I ask you guys to make a change. Make a change on the rules to protect the children, not only myself, not only my grandkids, but all the little kiddos that come to my preschool, all the little 25 of them that need to be having... To need to be protected. I'm asking y'all to do something. And it's an easy get-together, think of a solution, because it's definitely not, whatever they want to call it, a farmland. There's absolutely no farm equipment. There are no trees built. You own a farmland, you're not going to constantly shoot every single day. And it's not just 100 rounds. It's over 1,000 rounds, and it's just not one basic gun. It's different kinds of them. We have several recordings. I have the time that they've started. I have the time that they've ended, and I've recorded them. And I will be more than happy to put everything on a thumb drive so y'all can go home and sit in your homes, and y'all can listen to it, because that's what we have to deal with. We have to deal with the shooting. And now, they're actually trying to open up another one, which is right across the dirt road from my house. So let's think about that. More ammunition to affect the children that are at my preschool and my family and my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fretwell. Mr. Smithman?
That concludes the public comment period this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. I will move into public hearings, and we'll start first with the Washington rezoning.
Good evening, chairman, county commissioners. First item before you for rezonings is the Washington rezoning period Z 2025 number four. The applicant is Strong Rock Engineering Group, and the owner is David A. Amon. So we take an overview of this request. The requested change is from rural agriculture to highway business and residential five. So this is a split rezoning request. Approximately, the request is for 47.58 acres to highway business and 52.21 acres to residential five. One tax map number in question, 1114-115. It's located at the intersection of Old 30 Road and Piney Green, and it's in the White Oak Township. The total rezoning area, though, is the 99.74 acres. There is no existing use for the property. When we compare an overview of the surfaces, there is a four-inch and eight-inch unwashed water mains along Old 30 Road, and then also a 24-inch unwashed water main along Piney Green Road. Wastewater for the nearby area, some are individual septic systems. However, there is a 12-inch unwashed sewer main on Piney Green Road. Fire service for the area is for Pumpkin Fire District with an ISO rating of four. Our most recent traffic count comes from 2022 on Old 30 with a trip count of 8,100. Staff estimates the capacity of just over 14,000. Schools in the area would be Morton Creek Elementary, Hunters Creek Middle School, and White Oak High School. If we take a full projection of max build-out for the allowed densities for the property, it would put all three schools over capacity. However, we would like to also note that Woodland Elementary does affect the districting for this area, and therefore also would affect our capacity figures. That is not addressed in your staff report, though, because that's a result that staff could not foresee, but we just would like to note that it would affect that. So we take a look here. You can see the zoning map, rural agriculture there in green, some of the other nearby adjacent zoning, as well as also across the road, there is that highway business designation. So we compare those districts... Or excuse me. Here you can see the actual breakdown of the two different zones. So the highway business portion of the property there is currently hashed, while the remnant there would be R5, which you can see better detailed there. That would be your R5 component. So compare the districts. Rural Agriculture's purpose is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county. It does allow for limited low-density single-family and limited commercial uses. The minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet and does not allow for multifamily. So we look at highway business. It's to accommodate our regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors. No minimum lot size and will allow multifamily for 20 units per acre. This is the same for residential five, multifamily of 20 units per acre, but a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. And its purpose is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily in our urbanizing areas of the county. When we look at the comprehensive plan Horizon 2040, it's designated as urban growth, and it's to provide for, again, that higher-density residential development and more intensive commercial developments. When we look at the residential and non-residential summaries here, you can see we would look for a density of six to eight dwelling units per acre for that residential component or multifamily for 12 dwelling units or greater. Both residential five and highway business would be considered corresponding zoning districts based off those densities and also the allowed uses. Here you can see the comprehensive plan. It designates a property with urban growth. They're adjacent. As you start to move up Old 30, we start to transition to that suburban growth as you get away further from Jacksonville. Here you can see the environmental conditions for the property. There is a regulated flood zone on the property, which is the AE flood zone. There's also there it radiates from the Poplar Branch Stream, which is a blue-line stream which runs along the adjacent west side of the property. Wetlands are present on the property as shown in the rezoning plat prepared by our aerial and ground surveying. This is attachment four in your packet. It's not detailed on the screen because we do not have the GIS data from that, which is not required for an application. Here you can see the flight path overlay. It does cross the property. The flight path overlay is really so we can be mindful of anything that would impair the air traffic above. It prohibits uses that would create dust and smoke, glare and light, and anything that would have electromagnetic interference. Any sort of additional uses that would have large congregates of individuals may require special use permit within that area, but we would work with the applicant within the flight path overlay. So as we look at reasonableness in the public interest, the future land use map would be supporting of this as both those districts are corresponding, which means objective 1.1. Objective 1.2 is we proactively manage growth to areas with existing infrastructure and sufficient capacity. Several infrastructure types would have sufficient capacity. Our goal is also to promote a broad range of housing, both residential five and highway business uphold that objective. We also seek to ensure a range of commercial throughout the county, which rezoning this highway business would provide for that. And we support in general a pro-business and pro-growth attitude. Non-supporting, though, as well, we mentioned, at full build-out would put some of our schools over capacity. Therefore, this objective 2.4 would not be supporting. Objective 4.2 is we want to be mindful of the natural environment and where we are developing nearby environmentally sensitive areas. And objective 5.2, we support efforts to protect cultural and historic sites. There is one on the property, and we'll get to that later in the presentation. At March 6, the planning board met and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request. The applicant was present for the meeting, and one citizen spoke against the application. Their concerns were regarding school capacity and transportation infrastructure. The planning board discussed the split zoning nature of the request, requiring exactly where that HB and R5 designation is, which we do, again, have a survey on file with the application of that exact line. No military impacts were presented. However, the flight path overlay was discussed, and again, there is no concerns at this point. Here you can see an overview of the property. Again, no existing use. You can see there on the west side that Poplar Branch Stream. As you take a closer look there, you can see some, again, how it fits as it relates to some of those adjacent neighborhoods. Here you can see we posted the required posting for tonight. Here you can see we posted the required posting for tonight, and a little bit of wider view that some of those fields at the, you know, the south end of the property. One interesting note for the property is it does have a cemetery, which staff was able to locate, has Jasper Etheridge and his sister Mary are buried on site. There were two other marked graves, which staff were not able to determine who they were. Any sort of relocation process or anything like that, we would follow all state law and partner with the other agencies. Jasper was a county commissioner, and so he was one of our first. As well, we also consulted with our partners at the museum on his history, and I have disclosed this to the applicant of where this is located on site, and they are aware. We'll conclude with our chairman's remarks from the planning board. So it's a total of 99.74 acres. Part should be rezoned highway business and part to R5. Current zoning is RA. The rezoning is supported by five objectives and not supported by three objectives in the comprehensive plan. The main objective not supporting is severe overcapacity of all the schools in the area should this rezoning result in full use of density allowed. However, there is a planned new elementary school, which would take some of the pressure off the school system and, or the school in this district. Citizens spoke to the request, and one had a question about the schools, and the other was in favor of the rezoning. This would result in split zoning situation if the developers subdivided the property as planned after the zoning is approved. The rezoning is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Therefore, it is respectfully requested that the board commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2025, number four. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We will open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone signed up for comments?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Keith Robbins.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I guess first, let's start. When I was about this big, I learned how to swim at the YMCA, so it's good to know that you're getting a new Y here in town. I'm Director of Planning and Land Use Development for Strong Rock Engineering Group, and we want to reiterate the basic case here that this is a high-growth area, according to the master plan, and the zoning that we're proposing fits within that completely, and we feel that that'd be the highest and best use for this land. As we know, the additional revenues that will be generated from this site could then help offset school, the increased school budget or other issues in that sense. So very simply, we think that this is the highest and best use. It'll take an unused asset in your community and provide a stronger and longer tax base. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and residents of Onslow County. My name is Avery Washington. I am the manager of Continental Ground, and I wanted to share some insight in the vision with this project, with this property, and some of the things that we've done in becoming aware of some of the concerns regarding the project and how it affects the community and the school system and the like. So in the packet provided to you, there is a rendering of sort of a vision of what we're shooting for. This is to facilitate the creation of a walkable, mixed-use community comprised of three districts. A commercial district, currently working with different end-users and developers to attract something like a neighborhood grocer, the kinds of businesses that would provide essential needs to the surrounding residences and community, a high-density residential district. Honestly, our goal is trying to attract a 55-plus community builder or senior living organization, and then a moderate-density district. We're currently engaged with numerous residential builders currently present in Onslow County and the surrounding area. We intend to separately submit for layout approval of each district. With your approval to rezone, we would initiate layout design and conduct traffic impact analysis prior to those submissions for layout approval. Additionally, regarding the schools, I've spoken to Dr. Gardner of Onslow County Public Schools to discuss the criteria for helping find a suitable school site to address the strain that development overall puts on the school system. Actually spoke with him today, so I'll be assisting Onslow County Public Schools with finding a suitable site in the area that meets the footprint needs of specifically addressing, going over capacity with the elementary schools concurrently. It seems like the high school's good for now. He wasn't too pressed about it. And then lastly, regarding Jasper Etheridge and his family's burial plots, I've engaged with Jones Funeral Home and Tisdale McConnell in order to facilitate putting together the process or initiating the process to properly remove the remains, depending on what the most appropriate location may be. I would just plan to move him to another location on-site that would be accessible to the public, so that if the county or the city of Jacksonville desired, they could make it a historical location, have a marker, something of that nature, excuse me, of that nature, or to the city cemetery or another location of more historical significance if that was deemed more appropriate. That's all I have at this time, pending any questions from you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is John Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, county manager, county attorney, the residents of the county of Onslow County. I'm here with my partner, Daniel McIntyre of Atlantic Coast Capital, to tell you that we met Mr. Avery Washington, and we're very excited about participating in this project with him, to be involved as a financial backer and a co-developer. So I'm here to tell you that we support Avery and the vision if your county moves to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the final speaker for this public hearing is Daniel McIntyre.
I'm going to defer.
Thank you, sir. So that being the last speaker, we will close the public hearing and bring it to the commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Oh, go ahead.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion.
Mr. Washington, could you come back up, please? I know that Mr. Gardner's in the audience. I see him back there in the corner. We just met with the Board of Education probably about two or three months ago, and we're talking about two schools toward the Hubbard area, and one has to be made first, and that's going to be in Dixon, and that's an elementary. My question to you is, if you're going to build this project, it looks like a very large project, which I would support, are you going to give us land for a school?
So what my intent would be, as somebody who looks at a lot of land all the time and can't make use of most of it, is helping find a suitable site. With this project at 175 Old 30 Road, what we'll be doing is completing all the engineering permitting and entitlement, and then partnering with end-users as they build out the site. Similarly, that's what I would intend to do for the school system unless more was needed, is find a suitable site, get site control, and if necessary, take it through the process so that as they go through their own processes to move funding, not quite sure how that works for you all, maybe it will be shovel-ready in line with whatever needs to occur on the counties end.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
The second zoning proposal before you tonight is the Peters rezoning, or P R E Z 2025, number five. The applicant is Dominion Land Corporation. The owner is Mr. Alan M. Peters. So we take an overview of the request. It's from residential 15 to residential 10. It's tax map number 323-82.2. It's located near the intersection of Blue Creek Road and Pony Farm Road, specifically on the southwest corner, and it's in the Jacksonville Township. The total rezoning area is 74.11 acres, and the existing use is forested. We compare the services in the area. There's a 6-inch unwashed water main along Blue Creek Road. There's a 14-inch unwashed water main along Pony Farm Road. And nearby properties are served by individual septic systems. Fire service for the area is for Southwest with an ISO rating three. And on our most recent traffic count, it came from Blue Creek Road from 2022 with 4,400 trips. Staff estimates the capacity, though, of Blue Creek Road over 14,600. We are working with NC DOT on studying specifically the Blue Creek and Pony Farm Road intersection. Schools serving the area is Meadowview Elementary, Southwest Middle School, and Southwest High School. Staff has the capacities for if the site is fully built out. It would put all through, the elementary and the middle school over capacity, while the high school would have remaining capacity. And again, this is just for this individual rezoning, not including any other rezonings from this year. So we take a look at the site. You can see is identified there the crosshatching with the residential 15. There's other nearby residential 15, such as the northeast corner, and again, down Blue Creek Road and kind of both directions. There is other R15 in the area, but is all individual, single-family. So we compare the two districts. The purpose of R15 is to accommodate moderate-density single-family residential development in suburban areas of the county, have access to utility and transportation infrastructure to support development at a suburban scale and intensity. Minimum lot size is 15,000 square foot, and there is no multifamily allowed. So we compare residential 10. It is also a moderate-density single-family district, but again, on the higher end of moderate density. It has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet and allows for a multifamily at 10 dwelling units per acre. And it's in the more urbanizing areas of the county that have necessary, or have access to the necessary infrastructure. So we look at the comprehensive plan, Horizon 2040, with a suburban growth category. Its intent is to provide opportunities for moderate-density residential development and supporting non-residential development. And again, this is along the fringes of the municipalities and their suburban, urban growth areas. So we take a look at the residential summary. It's to provide for residential single-family development and at densities four to five dwelling units per acre or a multifamily of eight to 10. Both residential 15 and residential 10 would be considered corresponding zoning districts as a residential 15 under the planned residential development could reach those moderate-density at that higher prescription. Here you can see the future land use designation of suburban growth. And here you can see the environmental conditions of the site. There are no regulated blue, or excuse me, there are no regulated flood zones. There are some adjacent blue-line streams on the property, such as Hog Pen Branch, King's Branch, and Spring Branch, all labeled there on your screen. No wetlands evaluations have been submitted to the county staff at this time, but that would be covered through the, any sort of development review process. Here you see the property is mostly covered by the flight path overlay, and again, this is designed to mitigate any sort of uses that would impact air travel, such as causing smoke or dust, glare or glint of any kind, as well as anything that would interfere with the radio operations of aircraft. Here you can see its reasonableness in the public interest comparisons. The future land use map both supports and does not support the rezoning. Both the districts are corresponding, residential 15 and residential 10. The objective 1.2 in terms of proactively managing growth both supports and attracts. It supports because it's additional variety of housing types, which objective 6.1 also supports, but we also want to be mindful as we have infrastructure that becomes over capacity in directing growth to other areas of the county. And objective 2.4 would be non-supporting, as there has been several rezonings in the area which could impact our school system's capacity. At March 6, 2025, Onslow County Planning Board voted four to one to recommend denial of the rezoning request. The applicant was present, and one citizen spoke against the request. Their concerns were regarding school capacity, transportation capacity, and just traffic in general. They also talked about how the area used to be more rural than it is now, and so they were discussing that with the board. No military impacts, though, were presented during the planning board meeting. Here you can see an overview of the property. Again, currently forested. You can see there the power line easement running through. Here you can see the sign posted for today's hearing there, and it was right at the corner in a place very visible. We'll conclude with the remarks of the chairman of the planning board. Total of 74.11 acres, zoned R15 to be zoned R10. The request is supported by three objectives and not supported by two objectives in the comprehensive plan. However, both R15 and R10 are consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the suburban growth category. One citizen spoke against the planned rezoning due to the large subdivision already approved across the intersection. This is a dangerous intersection, and more residential would add to the problem. R10 would allow for multifamily and increase the density considerably. This would result in, this would not result in a split zoning situation if the developers subdivided the property as planned, and that is a carryover from the previous comments. Apologies for that error. And that concludes the staff presentation from this portion. It's respectfully requested that the board commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2025, number five, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We will now open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone to speak?
We have one citizen signed up, Mr. Chairman, and that is Ashley Frank.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. Again, my name's Ashley Frank. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Dominion Land. Mr. Metcalf did a great job presenting the staff report, but I do want to point out some unique characteristics of this particular tract. It is 74.11 acres. According to the boundary survey, which I think you were provided, if you check the orange highlight, that area is a Duke Power CP&L Transmission Line easement. That easement's 170 feet wide, and it runs about 1,660 feet, transecting that particular piece of property. That equates to about six and a half acres. If you're familiar with Duke Energy easements, it pretty much prohibits any type of land development in those areas. I also provided you with a preliminary site plan provided by Southeast Environmental, and it demonstrates there's roughly about five acres of wetlands on this particular tract. This rezoning, there are three objectives that would support the rezoning, but as Mr. Metcalf pointed out, there was also three objectives that were inconsistent, and I wanted to talk to you specifically about those tonight. The objectives that were both consistent and consistent are 1.1 and 1.2. And according to planning staff's presentation and the planning board, the use of multifamily would be inconsistent in this surrounding area. However, if you recall, back in February of this year, you recently rezoned an area to CB, which is directly across the street. And if you look at the little zoning map I handed you, it actually has CB. That's about 60 feet from the property line of the Peters rezoning. Why is that significant? Because the central business district or community business district allows 10 units per acre of multifamily by right. So multifamily is consistent based off that rezoning. Just for perspective, single-family in the CB district requires a special use permit. So single-family is not even permitted by right in the CB district. The other objective was the Onslow County School District. We would put the two schools over capacity. Meadowview at 19 students over capacity, Southwest Middle- Meadowview at nineteen students over capacity, Southwest Middle School at forty-seven students over capacity. The Onslow County School is a member of the T R C. We received no comments from the T R C, and no representation from the T R C, no comments from not only the school board, but no other sitting member. Meadowview Elementary School, if you look on your rezoning map or the rezoning map just north of the site, is less than a mile away. Why is that important? It sits on twenty-seven acres, the elementary school does. But surrounding the elementary school is eighty-seven acres that is currently owned by the Onslow County School Board. Our concern is, was any potential growth in these schools taken into account before the gross density of seven hundred and forty-four units for this site placed on this to put schools over capacity? As I mentioned earlier, this site does have some unique characteristics, and that would significantly limit density as we can't build anything in the Duke energy nor in the wetlands. So the calculations of raw acreage for this particular site putting, would put the school board over capacity may not be accurate since it's not taking into account the buildable acreage, and in turn, that would, that would limit the density. According to the housing market needs assessment provided by the North Carolina School of Government Development and Finance Initiative, Onslow County's labor force has grown by nine percent since 2021, outpacing North Carolina's five percent. You may ask why is this important, but this creates a housing shortage. A forum was held in 2024 here in Onslow County, as well as a housing supply gap analysis prepared in March of 2024. The estimates show at this rate of growth by 2029, that Onslow County would be short twelve thousand units of housing. And with Onslow County's largest employers being Defense, ex-army, navy, and air force, Onslow County School Board, Marine Corps, Walmart, and Onslow County Government, which is only four miles from, from this particular site, that shows you that there is a need for housing in the area where our top five employers reside. I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. No other speaker signed up.
We'll close the public hearing and bring the matter to the board. Motion to approve. Have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, we are. It is suburban growth area. We're already, according to our economic development statistics, some ten thousand housing units short right now, and we're growing by three, four thousand people a year. We plan for schools. We intend to, to build new schools, and it'll be several years before they actually build out this subdivision. And I'm sure that we'll be ready for the schools when we need them. So I'm certainly in favor.
Any further discussion? Mr. Metcalf, can you pull back up the, the picture that shows the rezoning in that, that area, the zones in that area?
There you go.
All right, so the, all the, the purple there is, is R fifteen, and then community business, so that community business can do the multifamily.
I was just double checking that to make sure I believe it is a special use permit, which case R ten is a by right approval. So that is a different comparison there, sir, in terms of approval processes.
Okay, okay. All right, that's, any questions with that, anybody else anymore? All right, so no more. Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. With that being said, all in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So the nays are one, two, three, four, and two, yea, so motion denied.
And we'll need a vote.
Denial motion.
Yeah, a denial motion, that's correct.
I need a motion to deny the request for the rezoning.
Motion to deny.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? So I think R fifteen would create the opportunity for more there, so let's go ahead and vote now. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
On the discussion, I'm just curious here, is this an appropriate application for the conditional rezoning that we've discussed?
Mr. Metcalf?
Thank you for letting me squeeze that in.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So my understanding is this motion must be voted on. I would defer to the county attorney. However, a conditional rezoning application could come back and would not have to wait the required timeframe because it is a substantially different application. In staff's opinion, I mean, obviously, the board makes the final determination on that, but staff would endorse that. And I would like to correct the one note I said. Community business, it is by right technically multifamily. So I misspoke there, just wanted to correct that. I double-checked the ordinance, this is why we always go back to the book. So just want to make that. But yes, in the book, for example, with a conditional rezoning, they could come back because it is substantially different, and it would involve a site plan for the board to review.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Two, so motion carries four, two. We'll move to... Mr. Metcalf is back again with the subdivision text amendment.
We're talking about the book. Sometimes we have to amend the book. So section six oh nine point four, the subdivision text amendment for the board, Z T A 2025 number two. The applicant is the Onslow County Planning and Development Department. So context for the requested change is North Carolina General Assembly passed session law 2023 number ninety, also known as House Bill six twenty-eight. It amended General Statute one thirty A dash three, three, five. And this is what allows us to regulate wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal, i.e. septic systems. Previously in 2023, we updated the subdivision ordinance to reflect a pathway for the authorized onsite wastewater evaluator, or A O W E certification. This comes from that state law. However, a section of it, section C two of that House bill states that nothing withstanding any other provision of law, a local government, a local, a unit of local government shall not prohibit or regulate by ordinance or enforce an existing ordinance regulating the use of offsite wastewater systems or other systems approved by the department under rules adopted by the commission when the proposed system meets the specific conditions of the approval, i.e. there are provisions in our ordinance that we are being requested to remove. So an overview of these requested changes is we are repealing parts of section six oh nine point four, and we'll detail those in a moment, to clarify that the state of North Carolina has jurisdiction over the rules governing wastewater systems comparative to Onslow County. So it's reasonable in the public interest for us to stay compliant with North Carolina General Statute. As we overview the request, here you can see the existing text of the ordinance. In this section, we are remaining and not changing. So they're still having to detail in the subdivision plan approval process when they're doing onsite and when they're doing offsite. However, in section D, which is the bulk of this amendment, is where we are simply clarifying that those systems are going to follow by the North Carolina General Statute or, again, rules that are set by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Below is where we had specific standards as relates to those offsite septic systems with marking them, their location, and again, how those supply lines had to be oriented, detailing their corresponding repair area, having suitable access easements, how the access easement had to be constructed, the shedding of water for those areas, and the corners of those drain field had to be marked, and also division, or provisions with their upkeep and maintenance. Again, all of those that are strike through are being proposed to be removed. At the March sixth, planning board voting unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present because it was county staff, and no citizen spoke against the application. Planning board discussed the request and the recent history of updating the subdivision ordinance as long, as, as well as staff's efforts in keeping an updated ordinance. No military impacts were presented, though, during the planning board meeting. And we will end with the remarks of the chairman of the planning board. This text amendment deletes most of the subdivision ordinance requirements for the concept and preliminary plans for a new subdivision with regard to subsurface wastewater systems, especially multi-user and offsite septic systems. The North Carolina General Statutes mandate the changes and will be clarified before this amendment is finalized. It's respectfully requested that board commissioners consider the proposed subdivision text amendment of Z T A 2025 number four. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We will now open for public hearing. Anyone to speak? Mr. Smitherman?
No, sir. No one signed up to speak on this matter.
All right, commissioners?
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So, Mr. Metcalf, congratulations. You finished first tonight. We are now moving to our quarterly financial report from Mr. Kevin Paterson, our chief financial officer.
With these, again, starting off with the revenues, we are currently on schedule with where we are for budget collections. For the properties, for the sales tax collections, I do want to point out, right now, it does look there, there's a significant disparity in between the thirty-nine million collected and the forty-four million collected as of March thirty-first. This is because we still have sales taxes that are collected in rear. So these are actually, the thirty-nine million are the property taxes collected through December. We are actually just collected the December property taxes in March. So that's the reason for the disparity. Also looking at a property taxes, we are currently on task, just currently exceed what we have collected last year, which we will be on target right now for the one hundred and forty-one million dollars of property taxes that we collect. On the collection rates, you'll notice that there's a significant decline in the last five months of the year. Basically, our standard property taxes, our standard ad valorem taxes are nominal. The two million dollars approximate that we collect each year from here on is our motor vehicle taxes, or primarily motor vehicle taxes. And that will remain through until the end of August, the first of September, when the property taxes kick back in. You'll also see that we are looking on a consistent trend for the last three years of property taxes. You will notice that the blue line does tip, dip below the last year's a number. That's because there are no collections in the last three months on this graph. So the blue line will be above the orange, the blue line is current year, and we will be collecting later on. Sales tax revenue, also looking at the pattern here, we are still on a normal trend with our collection rate, but again, we are six months to go on actual collections or for our revenues for 2025. And again, we are still maintaining that standard pattern. We will see a drop for the next two months, which just goes back to the January and February slump after the holidays. Then we should hopefully see additional increases back through the summer. Right now, we are still waiting to find out if there are any other significant changes due to any other trends that we're seeing. We also looking at, we are just stacking those up in different methods. We are still on target for collecting where we're spec, where we're expecting to be for the end of the fiscal year for sales taxes. Also looking at budget and expenditures, right now of our three hundred and eleven million dollar budget, we have currently spent two hundred and eight million as of the end of March. Looking at that, even though it's nine months, there are certain items, especially debt service, which are still heavily slated towards the end of June, so it is not a matter of being massively underspent at this point in time, but we are still on a very good trajectory so that our collections are, I mean, our expenditures will be in budget. There are one or two areas that are going to be of specific concerns that will be discussed with the board in future work sessions. Also, again, looking at our expenditures, again, but breaking them out in different methods by purpose, again, we are looking at exactly how they break out. With the salaries and benefits, that does include the new salary adjustments after market analysis, and we are also doing projections through the end of the year, making sure that we are on target for that, hit our goals there, as well as looking for projections for next year as well. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I will piggyback off of Kevin this evening, just as a quarter three county grants report. Excuse me. I did this calendar year quarter, so this is from January one through March thirty-one, just because there's too many different quarters to deal with from state, federal, and so on and so forth. We accepted five grants in quarter three that totaled just shy of two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. This includes grants for animal services, the sheriff's office, and soil and water. We have six outstanding grant applications that we are waiting award status on that have been applied for. That total four point seven million. So those include topics in resiliency, health, the arts, I T, and solid waste. And we have four additional grant opportunities we have explored, but we're not currently pursuing. My goal is to kind of keep a running list of things that are sent to me, inquired about, things I have found, and keep them on the back burner so when new projects arise and things like that, we have an inventory of what we already know about. So it's not so much finding the sources of money, but already kind of keeping a track of what's out there. We're just holding on those. Some of them definitely I can see potential to arise in the future, and some of them, again, just keeping on the back burner. And that's all I have, pending any questions.
Questions? All right, thank you. So we'll move to item seven, the commissioner's quarterly committee reports. I know we, some of us haven't had any meetings lately, but if we would, might be a good time just to share what committees were on for the public to, to know. We'd like to share that. And if you have any information from any of the drone, we can go with it. Mr. Bennett?
Sure, thank you. Wasn't ready for that. So I'll start out with, with Onwassa, which I, board that I chair, and I guess the biggest couple of, couple of items that are of interest are the expansion of the Summer House plant in Holly Ridge that is, that is underway, double the capacity there, and also an expansion of the Hubert wastewater treatment plant that'll increase the capacity there. People ask about the, about the green pipes going down Highway twenty-four. Those are Onwassa's Highway twenty-four sewer project that is currently underway. It'll provide sewer access all the way down twenty-four from Swansboro to Piney Green. I'll pass on anything else for right now?
I sit on three boards. I sit on the fire commission. We didn't have a meeting this, this month at all. I sit on the jumbo board along with Roy Spanner. We didn't have a meeting this month either. I do sit on the A B C board. We did have a meeting, and this will be good for the Holly Ridge. We're doing the planning stages of a new store that will be in Holly Ridge. I think you've seen where the sign is there by Gulfstream. It's right in front of their place on the right-hand side. We're doing the planning stages of that right now. And those are the people that don't understand, I know the A B C stores, they sell liquor, but the money that the, they generate, a lot of the money is generated is given back to the county, back to the sheriff. The county gets over, I think, if I get this right, about one point one million we got this year. Holly Ridge gets some money out of that. That, that comes from the Snead's Ferry store. Swansboro gets money from the Swansboro store, and Richlands gets money from that store there. So the money does come back to the municipalities, and it goes to the hospital also, and goes to the sheriff for education, to educate our students and whatnot about the alcohol use and whatnot, but... But there's a lot of money comes back to the county and the city, so we're going to look at another store in Holly Ridge. And that's in the planning stages right now. I think you might have seen some flags out there. I think they're doing some of the site work, getting ready for that. So I'll give you more information next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I joined the Topsail Island Shoreline Protection a couple of months ago. Last meeting was, I think, probably the biggest thing, and Rick Grant for North Topsail may be aware of some of that, but we dealing with oyster leases, either tower leases or bottom leases, with Representative Carson Smith, who has parts of Onslow County and all of Pender County, a request of memoratorium on the Onslow County and Pender County leases. That one didn't get presented in Raleigh. There were some others that were presented, but that one was not one of those. Do sit on the Beach Island Sound BISAC, I guess is what it is. I haven't made it to one of those in quite a while, but back on target to do that and join the ECC, which that meets monthly, and I haven't had the first meeting for that one yet. So still quite a few things going on, but slowing down a little bit right now, so we'll have more for the next quarterly report because we'll have several meetings under our belt with that.
I think everybody knows I serve on the Airport Advisory Committee meeting, and things are moving along very well with the airport runway expansion project that we've got, which is very exciting. I also serve on the East Carolina Workforce Development Board, which really is just in name only. Statute dictates that elected officials have a board in place, and we are not necessarily involved in any, directly involved in any of the work that that, that board does for adding to the workforce through their efforts. The last thing is I am new to the Onslow County Civic Affairs Board, and I have not been able to attend a meeting yet either, unfortunately. However, this Thursday, I'll be attending the annual fabric of our community luncheon, so I'm looking forward to that on Thursday. So, thank you.
Not done to report him. Good.
I sit on Anwassa Board with Commissioner Bennett. He's our chairman. He gave it update. Thank you.
And I left off the juvenile crime prevention. I sit on that one, and we just recently had to do a revision of the budget, so a lot of that is just, just what it is. Juvenile crime prevention is working to, to take care of the youth. A lot of times, it is a response to what, what has happened, and we, we work, give them opportunities to, to improve, to improve their decision-making when it comes to juveniles. So we will continue to work on that. So thank you, commissioners, for your, your update and your reports. And we have, looks like one last, two general items, and we will have a response to the audit findings, and I believe that's going to be Mr. Patterson again, our, our financial off, our chief finance officer.
You have on your, in your agenda packet, the letter, which is a response to the FPIC, the Financial Performance Indicators of Concerns due to the audit. The issues that were discussed by the auditor were presented in the March work session to a painful degree, I believe. And these letters were, this letter is the direct response to any of those. I'll be happy to answer any questions without, or go back over any specific issues. But this is something that must be approved by the board and have signatures of all the board members.
I believe that's been signed this evening.
Yep. Yep. So do we need to?
So we need a motion to approve, make a motion.
You have the motion and the second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Patterson, you get to stick around for the audit contract.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we're also presenting the audit contract for the 2025 fiscal year audit. Again, it is using Malden Jenkins. With this, the price is $134,500. We did increase the number of grants to be audited to eight, which is where we expect the amount to be. The number of significant programs, those are any grants we receive for federal single audit, over a million dollars is considered a major program, of which all major programs have to be audited every three years, and with every year, you must audit at least 40% of the single audit dollars as well. So that is how it goes into the eight. That's the calculation of the eight program, and how it may vary from year to year depending on what it takes to get to those numbers. But with this contract, it does, it does plan on us having the audit completed by October 31st of this year.
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Smitherman, any comments tonight?
I'm going to keep it super brief. I want to thank Kevin Patterson and the finance office staff for making the journey from a very difficult position 18 months ago to what is now a well-functioning finance department that is now back on track. Our audits will be on time from now on. We have new internal controls, internal processes that have improved our ability to produce an audit in a timely fashion, and we have a new auditor that is helping us produce an audit in a timely fashion. So I think 18 months later, we should be proud of where we are in our finance department. And I will say that this, the current year, FY 25, will be the first budget that we have developed and audited as a new management team. So the next audit will be our first barometer of our effectiveness in our work as a new administration. Likewise, we'll congratulate our HR department for a similar journey over the last 18 months and the progress that they have made, and the, the processes, the communication between our employees, and most particularly between our finance department and our HR department have made significant strides, and I'm happy to report that everything is doing well in both of those functional areas of our daily internal operations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Pageet?
I want to like, thank everybody for coming tonight, and on the Manor Road, I'm in full support of the House bills, Senate bill, just to let you know. And, and you're not the only road that's in that shape. Yeah, so. Yes, sir. So, but outside of that, I want to thank everyone for coming. Mr. Taylor, I appreciate you coming, and we keep looking into it. I just don't know the answer at this time. I mean, I just don't know the answer, but we, we continue to keep looking, and I understand, hear you plead. I really do. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pageet. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, who is our first speaker, Mr. Smitherman? Please.
Our first speaker during public comment was Zachary Pinkney Jr.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm a very big proponent of crosswalks and sidewalks. I think crosswalks have to go through DOT because we don't own any roads, but if there's, if you can get specifics to us, perhaps the board would be willing to work with DOT or encourage. I think we have two commissioners that sit on Jumbo, and maybe perhaps they would be willing to take that to that committee and see if we can get some movement there. And I'm hoping with Mr. Kevin's suggestions on tourism dollars that maybe this board will consider sidewalks. I am a big sidewalk proponent, so I hope that we will consider that, but I, I also acknowledge that that's, that's a prayer. I'm just letting you know upfront from a county perspective, but at least I heard hope. So I would love to see more sidewalks as well, so I thank you and appreciate your, your passion, and Mr. Bogie as well, your passion, your heart for your neighborhood. It means a lot to me, and I do wish that, that I could just take the chairman's gavel and say, let's go fix this, because if I could, I would, and because, so I do appreciate your heart.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, I don't want to sound like a broken record here, but I would agree, and it was really wonderful to have citizens coming out with the really sincere interest that they have in the specific areas of, of topic, all of you. I do appreciate Mr. Bogie, the idea that you brought solutions, which is always great to have because it gives us like a jumping point as well. So thank you, and I hope everyone has a wonderful week.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes, sir. Agree with all three of you. The gentleman right there that was talking about streets, no, we're working on that. That's constantly being worked on. Everything you talked about is in the city of Jacksonville, and we sit on Jumbo, which is for the county and the city. They have safe streets they're working on. They have safe crosswalks. There's a lot more stuff being put in. If you notice, the, the safe streets is where they have to turn around and come in a different direction. They're doing a lot of those things within the city. They're trying to make a lot more turning areas, makes it more safer, but they are putting in a lot more crosswalks, and I believe it's some sort of a grant that we have, if I can remember, if Royce can piggyback off of that. But the same thing with the bills. We support the bills. The ranges, I'm a firearms instructor. I can tell you, I, I agree with you 100%, and I wish we could do something like what John said. If we had the gavel, we could do it, but we're working on it. We'll just see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would just say, Mr. Zachary, I live in the city of Jacksonville, too. I live in Jacksonville because I like to have streetlights and sidewalks and road maintenance and ISO 1 fire department, rated fire department. And, yeah, it's, we, we work with the city as much as we can, but the county doesn't have any roads or any road right-ofways or any road equipment. So, and, and under the state law, we cannot maintain roads in the county. So it, it puts us in a difficult situation, but those, those city streets, Commissioner Buchanan and I are always working to help get those city streets maintained, and the sidewalks, and the crosswalks, and everything else that you talked about. So thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just everything they said. Thank y'all for coming tonight. We appreciate the, the words, and, and we, we hear you, trying to do everything we can to, to support you, what we can do. I think several of us have been on the folks in Raleigh about the orphan roads as much as, as much as we can, and we'll continue, continue working, get something taken care of for, for you and for you as best we can with that. It was interesting to hear that you have a, I'm assuming, a registered certified preschool, so I understand those, those concerns there without a doubt. So with that being said, I believe we're getting ready to have a motion.
Close session.
There he goes.
Second.
In a second, so we're going to have a little bit of discussion as we get ready to vote on this, and we will not return here. We'll, we'll finish up in the closed session, so we won't come back. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. We are going into closed session.